Full of each person's time. So we are gonna go ahead and get started with this next group. Thank you all for joining in. I'm gonna start with who I see, which is Miss Stacy Smith. And our first question to each of the candidates is to please introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department. Two minutes, please, Ms. Smith.
Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here amongst all of the participants, the sponsors, and the candidates this evening. My name is Stacy Smith. I am a licensed professional counselor, or in other words, a therapist. So as you know, many candidates already have mentioned the growing need for mental health resources and access. I have the expertise and background to actually make that happen. And I think that helps to make me kind of unique and crucial as Cincinnati is really crying out for for this change and expansion. My view of what I would like to see changed within the Cincinnati Police Department would be primarily the addition of city-funded and city-sponsored mental health mobile crisis units. We have a team that has operated out of UC already, which is great. However, they do not operate 24 hours a day. They do not operate in all five of our districts, and they're very difficult to get a hold of. Our police department responds to around 7,000 to 8,000 mental health crisis calls a year at least, and that number is growing every single year, which shows the need for this change to happen. In addition to that, I would also like to see more social workers employed within Cincinnati Police Department to assist the officers as needed and to to be on hand to respond to the more ambulatory crises that maybe the mobile crisis teams may not be able to getting started. And those are the primary changes that I would like to see happen. And I actually have a six-step published plan to make it happen, utilizing our current city budget instead of raising taxes as other cities in the past have done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we are gonna have Bill Frost.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. Really appreciate being on. Bit about myself, can you hear me okay? Okay, good. Bit about myself, I'm originally from Great Britain, as you can tell. Been here for thirty something years now, an engineer at GE. So I've spent most of my life working on designing, manufacturing jet engines. Professional problem solver is probably the most appropriate way to describe myself for this for this group. I, you know, for a job, I use data to make decisions. So my 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 answers are gonna be based on the data that I have. And and obviously, in city council, there'll be more data available, and we need to be continually looking at things. So the vision vision for the police. I I I believe that that right now from the feedback I'm getting around the city is that the city wants more police on the street. It wants people walking, the communities, that the we need to bring the police up to the agreed minimums. We need to understand what attrition is in the police. And then we need to have regular annual recruit classes that will cover the attrition every year. Sometimes we need to do in the fire department, exactly the same thing. Like I said, in community policing is vital. I think having my experiences here in Pleasant Ridge, having the community police officer who understands exactly what's going on in the in the community is critical to to make the right decisions there on the spot. We need to have professional, respectful, and and rapid responses to all the complaints. And I'll talk about that a bit later in one of these other questions. And 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 in the end, the key is, the vision is that that people trust their police force again. And and obviously, the questions we're all answering here are, how do we get there? How do we get from where we are right now to to there? So that's well, that's my vision.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Mark Jeffries.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for everyone's time. I really appreciate it. So I'm Mark Jeffries. I'm running for city council to build a Cincinnati where kids who grew up like me, cleaning toilets, have the same opportunity to succeed as children of Fortune 500 executives. I'm the son of an immigrant. I grew up working poor on food stamps. When I got into college, I had a union job to give me the opportunity to pay for college and work my way through and into the middle class. I went to business school, spent seventeen years at TNG, leading businesses like Gillette and Pampers, before leaving four years ago to start my own company. I run a data analytics company with six employees. But I didn't do any of that myself. One of my core values is the belief that we all succeed through the help of others. And I had the help of family mentors, a union. Another core value of mine is too much is given, much is expected. For that reason, service has always been a core part of who I am. From starting a Big Brother program on the South Side of Chicago in college to community council and building a portion of the Smell Room from Park. I am endorsed by Hamilton County Democratic Party, FLCIO, and the Sierra Club, among others. So my vision for the Cincinnati Police Department, it's not radical. In fact, I'd say it's what we would expect and should expect of police, to serve and protect safe communities, safe streets, meaning working with communities to address the root cause of crime, to prevent it from occurring in the first place. Toward that end, I think we need a holistic approach to public safety, ensuring laws are enforced, but done in a fair way in partnership with the community. The community can and should be the eyes and ears of policing, starting with community councils. I understand that partnership, having chaired the Public Safety and Transportation Committee of Clifton Town Meeting, our neighborhood council. And I would look to leverage that experience on City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have K A Heard.
Yeah, hey, how's it going? Yeah, so I'm K A Heard, running for Cincinnati, Westwood. Hey, how's it going? How's it going? Oh, I'm sorry, I know I got two minutes, but um. Oh, my God. Was it a question or was it just introduce myself?
You're sharing your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, oh, yeah. So I did feel like more community engagement. Make sure that we have different opportunities to engage with our police department as much as possible throughout each and every community. Make sure that we have that relationship, especially within our community council. That's what I would love.
Thank you so much. And lastly, we're going to have Nick Jabin. Did I say your name right?
Nick Jabin.
Jabin, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Hello, everybody. My name's Nick, Nick Jabin. I'm one of the youngest candidates. Thanks for inviting me. Thanks for letting me be here with you all tonight. I'm a mental health activist in the community. So I've been out here the last couple of years, just getting people the resources and mental health resources that they need out here to get back up on their feet, whether it's getting them back into housing, whether it's getting them a job, whether it's getting them the resources to get just their mind and their mental disabilities or or drug issue or or whatever situation they're going through just solved. And so I've just been out here just aiding the other Cinsinatis for the last couple of years, just trying to figure out how to just get people back up to whatever they were trying to do before. So my my vision for kind of the police department this year just is pretty simple. It's not it's not anything complex. I I believe that our police do a good job, but we're not doing enough. I believe in working to make the police a more inclusive departments. And we have to start holding our people and our police accountable. Whether it's the police, whether it's the civilian, we must hold them accountable for their actions. We have to figure out how to restore like our police force and our and our system. We have to start getting in front of situations, like Mark said. We have to figure out how to reduce incidences and crimes being committed by implementing new services and new programs in our communities that can start helping people flourish and get back to their creative natures, whatever they're they're good at. And so initially, it's just collaborating with the community and figuring out how to get more responsible officers and more mental health resources. I'm actually on a slate with Stacy Smith and Jamie Castle this year. So we're all trying to hopefully get on council together this year. But we really, we believe in just getting more mental health resources available and mental health aid when it comes to the community. The police aren't equipped to be handling all the situations they're dealing with. So for instance, I've been out in the community observing for the last couple of years. I've been able to see a lot of incidences that haven't been appropriate when it comes to the legality of arresting a person. So we have to start being more appropriate in that structure. And if they're not, we have to figure out new ways to get rid of officers that aren't doing their job and replace them with people that care about the individuals and actually serving and protecting people. So that's all.
Thank you so much. So we are gonna move on to question two, starting with Bill Frost. Question two is, police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this?
Okay, thanks for the question. After the 2001 riots, you know, and all the events led up to it, there was a big change collaborative agreement. The police were heavily involved in that community. And and that that's been a fantastic thing for the for the city, obviously. I mean, we would have been, we would have had a different last year if we hadn't had the collaborative agreement. There's no question about that. So at that time, they added drug knowledge. They added social work of sorts to training to the police. And we've been using the police as a Band-Aid for this for a long, long time. And it's it's clearly not working as we saw during during COVID. So what I want to do is add social workers to the police force. And it doesn't really matter whether it's just part of a one of the current organizations who support the police or not. But I'm I'm really saying that for any particular run, if it's a kind of run where there's a social aspect to it, depending on criteria which are agreed upfront and that are based on risk of the if there's any risk of violence, et cetera, we would have in in situations where the where an expert decides there isn't a significant risk of violence, the first contact would be with a social worker, and then there would be there with a police officer. The police officer would be around a corner, out of sight, so there's no guns visible. And the job would be de-escalation by the social worker and trying to understand exactly what the root cause is and what's behind the issue, whatever it is. I I think that de-escalation part of it, which is what the police have been trying to do in a lot of cases, I think getting that into the hands of professionals is is the really important thing. And and I think that will help us get away from situations where, you know, it turns from a domestic violence to a kidnapping and a, you know, a holdup and a SWAT team issue. So that's my response on that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna have Stacy Smith.
Thank you again. As mentioned earlier, I have a six-step plan to establish a program that similar to what Bill has just mentioned. Other cities have already done this. Denver, for example, has had an extremely successful pilot program that started last year where they are dispatching social workers and licensed therapists to these types of calls. And in a single year, they responded to 1,300 calls with zero arrests. And, you know, all of these individuals were taken care of. And the the bottom line of that is, you know, our police are overstretched when they're asked to do this. It would be unfair to ask me, as a licensed professional counselor, to go investigate a crime or to go execute a search warrant, things that the police are responsible and trained to do. Likewise, it is completely unfair to ask police officers to go in and de-escalate someone who has bipolar disorder or schizophrenia or dual diagnoses or to respond to someone in a substance abuse crisis. So it also doesn't serve the individual who's in need of help because a lot of times these de-escalations that the police are offering have to be very fast because the police are so in high demand. Whereas if you have a therapist team or a social worker team, they can be with the person for as long as they need to have that individual there helping them to de-escalate. So my six-point plan is highlighted on my website. If anyone is interested in hearing more about that, I'd be happy to share more with you at any time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Nick Jabin.
Yeah, so when it comes to figuring out how to handle these social and mental health issues, it starts with the people that are handling them. It starts with getting more resource aided to the people and also mental health units. We need people that are appropriate to be handling these responses. We need people that are equipped and trained to be handling these responses. So just like Mark and Stacy and others have said, it's really important that we get individuals that know what they're doing to de-escalate the situation. We need to figure out how to get people like Stacy and me, who have been out here doing these de-escalation systems for a while now and have become good at them and are know how to appropriately respond. We don't need to be arresting people who haven't done anything illegal necessarily if if they have a mental health crisis. I mean, we have to figure out how to give people a second chance and figure out how to work with people. And that that's what it comes down to, is working together to handle these mental health situations. The community has to come together. We have to figure out how to work together. And so I I really think it just comes to being out there with the community. If you're on council, I think it's important to do ride-alongs and be engaged in in the police activity by being out in the community, working with the police. And that's what I plan on doing. I plan on actually working with the police like I do currently on a daily basis. I've actually helped with a number of situations in the community that I've been able to help the police de-escalate just because they've seen that I have a lot of knowledge and also have a lot of respect of the people out here in my community just from my my activism and the work that I've done on the streets. And so they see that people trust me and they're see that they're willing to work with me. And police have actually let me intervene because I've actually probably established over 150 friends in the police department just throughout this campaign. And before that, as I was working to to de-escalate some of these situations because I saw they weren't being handled right. So it's just getting more appropriate responses to handle the situations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Mark Jeffries.
Thank you. So as I mentioned earlier, I think it starts with the mission of the police, right? The mission of the police is to serve and protect. And just like many have alluded, that mission has expanded over the years. And we shouldn't expect them nor ask them to respond to the situations we're talking about right now. So just like we wouldn't ask a psychiatrist to respond to a homicide. So I saw this firsthand. I did I did do a ride-along with an officer as a part of Leadership Cincinnati Program. And the officer was doing his best amazing job to respond to help people who were suffering from drug addiction, victims of domestic violence, access resources. But frankly, it went well beyond his training. So it honestly doesn't set the officers up for success. So I think the key is to break down silos in the system, right? So you have the right people with the right training responding to issues. And on city council, one thing you can do, and I would do, is act as a convener. Make sure the right providers have been brought into the process so our citizens and neighborhoods are being served with the proper resources. So some of the things that Stacy mentioned and others, for example, the program divert domestic violence response team provides access to resources. And yes, we should look at defining what is the role of social workers that they can play to de-escalate nonviolent situations. Obviously, we don't want to put social workers in harm's way, but we can also learn from other cities who have very successfully deployed them in very specific, nonviolent situations to really better enable police officers to focus on their mission of serving and protecting. So thank you.
Thank you so much for answering that question. Last, we are going to have K A Heard answer our second question, which is, police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this, K A Heard?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. A couple of ways we can definitely address this, actually add more training, of course, more hours of training to our police officers. We can also add different individuals that is trained in that particular field to be on on call, I wouldn't really necessarily say already ran along with them, but some people that can be definitely on call that is specializing in that. But also, make sure that we treat each scenario as that scenario. Each scenario is different depending on the person. It could be domestic violence, or it could be something else that was going on. But of course, we gotta take care of domestic violence. But somebody may feel threatened or somebody that may, you know, might be well at that moment, but never hurt anybody. We shouldn't treat them as somebody that actually did the crime or unlike somebody that did the crime. We should assess the situation as much as possible and not put every situation, regardless of what it is, in the same box because it's different. But yeah, that's my my main things, training. And then also have people on call, make sure we assess each and every situation.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to acknowledge again that this is an event hosted by the League of Women Voters of Cincinnati area with our co-sponsors, the Women's City Club of Cincinnati and the Urban League of Southwestern Ohio. I wanted to give a special acknowledgement at this time of the excuse me, the Pleasant Ridge Library, who is live streaming this event for the community there. So and I wanted to point out that because there were so many candidates running for Cincinnati City Council, we decided to craft this forum in one-hour blocks. So we just had a group go at 6:00 PM. This is our 7:00 PM group. Our next watch party will be next Tuesday, September 14th, starting at 6:00 PM. We'll have a different group at 6:00, 7:00, and 8:00. If you are watching this live on Facebook, the replay will be available on Facebook. And we will also post the entire forum on the League of Women Voters YouTube page. So please pay attention to that. I am going to go ahead and ask our third and final question. And I also want to give the candidates a heads up that we're gonna do closing remarks for one minute after this third question. So the third question is, Cincinnati police data shows racial disparities in police use of force against civilians. The city's population is 42% black, yet 75% of police use of force incidents are against African Americans. How would you respond to this issue? And we are gonna start this question with Mark Jeffries.
Excellent, thank you. So unfortunately, the racial disparities that you mentioned are not unique to Cincinnati. But I think we also need to acknowledge the deep roots in this community, going back to black laws in the early 1800s, the use of force against escaped slaves and against escaped slaves themselves. You know, I'm a student of history. We can't escape that history. Fortunately, 20 years ago, we did make tremendous progress after the unrest of 2001 with the collaborative agreement. The collaborative agreement at the time was truly groundbreaking. And it should be the touchstone of how we address these systemic inequities. So I do believe it is a time to refresh the collaborative agreement and going look ahead benchmarks. So the role of city council is to set priorities for the city and convene stakeholders in order to make sure that we focus on those priorities as well as setting appropriate benchmarks, you know, for success. So this is a critical part of addressing these discrepancies and, you know, working to be the leader and the model for the nation that we once worked with the collaborative agreement, once it once it was put in place or when it was put in place. So for me, just being candid, obviously, I haven't been, I haven't been at the receiving end of use of force by police. My nephews, who are biracial, have experienced it, and I've seen the impact it's had on them. It's led to a deep mistrust of the police, which is understandable. And the reality is, we're not gonna be able to fulfill fulfill the police's mission to serve and protect everyone, everyone, until we really address this challenge. So I look forward to partnering with others to convene the right stakeholders to push for the refresh of the collaborative agreement that we need to ensure this issue is adequately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, to answer this question, we're gonna have K A Heard.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, I mean, honestly, it could, in my opinion, it could be a lot of, well, a couple of bad apples. I wouldn't want to put all the police officers in one bunch or in one thing. I feel like, especially with the CCA being over over the limit for us with complaints and everything, that will weed out a lot of people. That will weed out a couple of officers that may be doing the majority of what's going on for us against colored people. What we need to do is definitely get that list down of complaints to zero, honestly, what I would like to see. But as much as possible, we need to make sure that we fund it to the appropriate way that we can fund it, make sure that we get the complaints down, and get the bad apples out. I feel like that would help us tremendously for us in our policing, make sure that we give credit to the good officers that are doing good and make sure that the good officers that are, you know, out here seeing the things, that they speak up also. So we need to make sure that we figure out these complaints, where these complaints coming from. It could come from a small number of police officers. Once we weed them out, I feel like a lot of this will go down, will get better, and be more welcome inside our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Nick Jabin.
Yes, thank you. So I I a big thing I I've said tonight is accountability. That's one of my biggest points in my platform. We just need to hold people accountable. I mean, I I I I love our police. I have a lot of friends in our police. I chop it up from all day long downtown, when I'm around the city, working through different situations in the community. Because there's a lot of different situations that I have to deal with on a daily basis, and they're tiresome. But I I I I work really hard to just get these people back to the level that they need to be. And and that's what our police need to be doing. And one thing that President Biden has done, it was an urgent step in his administration, is is take this, is take support and sign legislation to abolish abolish qualified immunity, a legal defense which allows police officers to engage in unconstitutional illegal acts and in this safe liability. So we just, when it's when it's so obvious that it could only be or could have only been committed by the point just incompetent of just knowing that they're violating law, we just, we need to figure out just more bipartisan support for just when it comes to just our people. We gotta figure out how to have the right people handling these situations. But we we must start and plan to institute alternatives to our policing. When it comes particularly to situations where they're using guns and handcuffs, we are likely to make a situation worse. So we just have to figure out how to get communities to rely on the police to not but not respond and rely on every single situation and problem that we're handling. So we just, we're losing trust with the people of our police department. And we must show them that the police are here to serve and protect us.
Thank you so much. Next, we are going to have Bill Frost.
Okay, so this this is exactly at the heart of the collaborative agreement. I mean, this is this is what that collaborative agreement was all about. The refresh is going on right now, and we should all be helping the refresh be the future. It's got, we gotta double down on a lot of it. And and that's the key of of a lot of this stuff. But in specifically to answer this this specific question, I would first of all, fully staff and fund clearly the Citizens Complaint Authority. It's, it needs to be at least at the at the level of staffing and funding that it that it was supposed to be by law and as agreed in in the collaborative agreement. It hasn't been. I know they've they've just added some money, but they need to add more. So and and I would even look at going past the agreed levels. And maybe collaborative agreement 2.0 can can expand on that. But I think that's that's critical. I would want public reporting of everything and not just tucked away on a city website. I think it needs to be very available for everyone, including remedial measures that that they come to in those, in that. I would like every police officer on the street to have a body cam, which is on all the time. We shouldn't be allowing them to switch it off whenever they want to. I think that's for for their protection and for ours. I think that's very important. I think we should have an anonymous supporting, a reporting system for the police officers to report things that they see from their coworkers. And and it has to be anonymous. We can't allow it not to be. And we need we need anonymous processes for police to self-report as well. This is a big deal in the aerospace industry. Pilots self-report things that they do wrong. And and I think if if we believe that a lot of these issues are process-based, we need to allow the police to report issues with the processes. What went wrong? Why do they end up in a situation where I made a bad decision? That's very, very key. And finally, the hiring process for for police. We need to be doing thorough background checks. If someone has been a cop somewhere else, we need to know what they did at that in their last job. And we need to do a thorough review of the social media for these people before we hire them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last, we're gonna have Stacy Smith.
Thank you again, and I really appreciated hearing from all of the candidates tonight. And, you know, this is said with the Thank you again, and I've really appreciated hearing from all of the candidates tonight. And you know, this is said with the utmost respect. Um, I would like to offer something that um, hasn't been discussed already. And that is focusing on implicit bias training within our police department. Um, this is something that will not be popular with the F O P. Um, this was not popular with Trump, and I think that kind of lit the fire underneath people to also push against bias training. And you know, I think, I think it needs to be twofold. One, there's the traditional bias training that people know of where people are just educated on what bias is and in what situations that might be, you know, seen or noticed or come out. The warning signs essentially. However, bias training and bias identification are two very different things. I think that we need to have a rigorous program within our police department that actually identifies when officers have implicit biases. So when they are, when they see an individual of color and then they're confronted with the words, you know, danger or um, you know, stop or things like that, are their eyes looking in the direction of people of color or white people? These are the types of trainings that are offered and can be run by professional organizations who know how to root this out. And I think we need to get, you know, a, a, a real stronghold on that um, and actually get implicit bias training and identification happening within our police department.
Thank you so much. So we are about to um, begin our closing remarks, but before we get to that, I just wanted to mention that um, our candidates have also been asked, all the candidates um, that are running for all the offices have been asked questions by the League of Women Voters and will be printed. The responses will be printed and available in our voter guide this year. Our printed voter guide will be in the Cincinnati Herald. It will be in the first edition in October, which should be October seventh. As well as there will be copies at our league office available for pickup. And we will also have distribution throughout Hamilton County um, libraries. So if you're interested in picking up one of our print guide, they will be available um, at the beginning of October. If you have access to the internet and you're watching this and you're savvy, you can also access the same information plus more using vote four one one dot org. Um, that resource allows you to access candidate information as well as um, any forums that we co-sponsor or host it like this. Um, as well as issues and um, anything else that might appear on the ballot. So please remember to use the resource vote four one one dot org. So next, we're going to have one minute for closing remarks from each of the candidates, starting with Nick Jaben.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say thank you for letting me join tonight, and it's been a pleasure speaking with all of you um, and hearing all your concerns and your thoughts and opinions when it comes to helping fix this city. Uh, it comes to put all of our hands in the pot. When it comes to figuring out these situations, we all have to work together to solve these issues. We can't have half and half. We have to all come together, uh, come together and, and work together to solve these issues. Um, I, I don't really want to say much more than that, because that's what it comes down to. And it's just working together with individuals, the police in implement, implementing new ways to actually solve things that are actually be positive for people out here, our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Bill Frost.
Okay, yeah, uh, same again. Thank you very much for having me. This has been, it's been great to listen to and, and it's been great to participate. Um, one, one thing, there's a lot of great ideas out there. There's all the great places to go. There's people studying this all over the country. A great resource that I found Campaign Zero, but I know there's lots and lots like that of, of people trying to help after last year and all the terrible things we saw last year. So I would recommend everyone who's watching this to go out and do some research. And you have lots of opportunities to be part of your city's response. Citizens on Patrol, I'm a member of, is a great way to help in your community and get to know the police on a personal level. So um, thanks for having me. Uh, you can get more information about my campaign at frostforsincywithanI dot com. And um, I look forward to hearing from you and uh, seeing you on the campaign trail. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Stacy Smith.
Thank you to all of the sponsors, all of the candidates and everyone who's watched tonight. It's been really fun. And um, if you'd like to learn more about me and my campaign, um, you can find me on Facebook and Twitter and YouTube um, at Stacy Smith C C C. Stacy is with an E, by the way. Um, and as well as my website, StacySmithC C C dot WordPress dot com. Again, Stacy with an E. Um, but I would just encourage voters, you know, as you hear, you know, so many candidates even talking about mental health concerns and really expanding access to care. Um, you know, it, it makes sense to me, and this is not, you know, meant to be a diss on anyone. But it makes sense to me who has someone with the expertise in that field to head that up for the time being. And that's what I plan to do if elected to Cincinnati City Council. Actually, whether or not I'm elected to city council. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Mark Jeffries.
Yes, well, I echo the thanks. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, for this opportunity. Um, look, we're, we're at a really critical time in the city after the, the recent corruption, big systemic problems that we have. And when you look in the city, big things get done when people come together. Free School Promise, issue seven. I have a history of bringing people together to solve big issues and big problems. Uh, which is what I did at P and G. I've done it on community council. I've done it, uh, founding a nonprofit. That's the kind of leadership that I think we need in order to move this city forward. Collaborative leadership to really solve problems. So uh, if you do want to find out more information about me, it's uh, voteJeffries, J E F F R E Y S dot com. Uh, and I ask for your support on November second. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Last, we'll have K A Heard.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, I just want to give a shout out definitely to all the candidates, uh, Mark, uh, Stacy, uh, Bill, uh, Nick. Um, appreciate seeing all your guys on the trail, um, every time. Also, the, um, the League of Women Voters. Thank you so much for having us, for us to have a platform to speak our mind and everything. A shout out to the viewers. Um, appreciate y'all taking the time to uh, view this and um, I know I'm, I'm not in a, the right proper uh, area, uh, by being in the parade. I'm sorry about that. Please don't hold that against me. Those are all love. But I'm, I appreciate everybody. Um, I love everybody. We here to support our police officers. Um, even though, you know, some things that's, you know, that's bad, but let's all work together. Let's correct it. Let's make sure that we become uh, the best, we have the best police department that we can have, uh, to show the nation of how it should be ran. Thank you all. Much love.
Thank you so much for each and every one of the candidates that joined this evening. If you would like to, you can go ahead and log off as we uh, end and close this event this evening. Um, I just wanted to mention that the League of Women Voters and the Women City Club also co-sponsored the Cincinnati Public School Board of Education Candidates Forum, um, which is recorded and can be found on the School Board Schools website. So if you're doing candidate research like this, that would be a great place to check out those candidates as well. Um, just a friendly reminder that early voting will start October sixth um, around the same time that our voter guide will be published. So be, please be sure to pick up a copy or view the same information online at vote four one one dot org. I want to also mention our sponsors for this evening's event, which is the Women City Club of Greater Cincinnati as well as the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio, and of course, the League of Women Voters of Cincinnati area. Thank you so much for tuning in tonight. We are gonna resume next Tuesday, September fourteenth promptly at six P M. and have a different group at six P M., seven P M. and eight P M. So please join in on Facebook and check it out. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.